Exchange program and then sort of like, don't bother coming back.
Yeah, when I was on council, that's one thing we always told city manager is, don't let us wake up to read the paper to find out something's wrong. You better be on the phone with us.
Good morning. I'd like to bring the September 10 plan is only meeting to order. Would everybody please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's get going. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pozzanel.
Present.
Commissioner Selberg.
Here.
Commissioner Buck.
Here.
Commissioner Azami.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Coletta.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Gabrielson. Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
And Chairman Fliché.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Couple of announcements. Anyone who has not yet signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete the request to speak form, which is also located in the lobby table next to the sign in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item, including sub items. Please note that there are stairs on the right, left and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using these stairs. There's also a ramp located at the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos or letters they intend to use at today's meeting, please have 17 copies and give them to staff member in the back of the auditorium. She has her hand up back there. Thank you very much. If you do not have 17 copies, you may use the table with the overhead camera in the front next to the podium to present your documents. If you want your documents to go on record, you must hand them to clerk after your presentation with the agenda item clearly marked on the document. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are sitting at the table with microphones during the meeting. If you have any questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium who can meet you in the lobby to discuss. A timer will be activated for all speakers. It will be limited to two minutes to make your presentations and statements. Everyone, please turn off your cell phones, pagers and place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must receive a phone call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to make your conversation. We also ask that the audience refrain from talking with anyone during the presentations and discussion. Today, the planning is only commission will hear public testimony and then forward the recommendations to the board of supervisors. The items with the recommendation made by the commission will be heard by the board of supervisors Monday, October 6, 2014 at 9:30 a.m. In the same location with the exception of any continued items. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building at campus are tobacco free areas, which means no smoking is allowed curb to curb. Also, only bottled water is allowed in the auditorium, no food, soda, coffee, et cetera, in the auditorium. If the meeting goes on past 1 o'clock, the commission will break for lunch at 1. Approval of the minutes from the last meeting, does everybody have a chance to review? Any questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jones and a second by Paul Selberg, I think?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Regular agenda. Item number one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors parcel number 402-32062 From an agricultural residential one acre minimum lot size to a single family residential zone. The purpose of the rezone is to bring the parcel size into conformance with current zoning. The applicant purchased the property in its current state. The staff is recommending approval, subject to conditions.
Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The applicant called me this morning and stated that he wanted to be here. He lives in Beaver Dam Littlefield area and I-15 is washed out. He cannot get here.
Okay. We have no speakers on the item. Any questions of staff from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on item number one.
I move we approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pozzanel and a second by Commissioner Buck. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, same sign, motion carries. Item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number two is an evaluation of a request for a zoning use permit on assessors parcel number 404-49027 For a secondary residence in an agricultural residential one acre minimum lot size zone in the Centennial Park vicinity. I will note that there is an error in the staff report. The FEMA firm panel should read 040058-0300D.
Okay. Is the applicant present for item number two?
Mr. Chairman, the staff recommends approval with conditions. Item number, or the applicant for item number two also lives in the strip area. I think they live over towards Centennial Park in Colorado City. They are experiencing the same difficulty in getting here as the applicant number one.
Wow. Okay, we have no speakers on the item. Any questions, comments from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, item number two.
I'll make a motion to approve. Item number two, staff recommendation.
We have, okay, a motion by Commissioner Selberg and a second by Commissioner Jones. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item number three.
Mr. Chairman, I have to excuse myself.
Okay. Commissioner Azami's got to excuse himself. Item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors parcel number 224-31023D From a general commercial zone to a commercial manufacturing open lot storage zone to allow additional commercial uses in the South Mojave Valley vicinity. The staff recommends approval with conditions.
Is the applicant present? Applicant is not present. We have no speakers on the item. Any questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, item number three.
I move we accept per staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jones and a second by Commissioner Buck. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number four is evaluation of a request for an amendment to Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2001-99 Which set forth a rezone of assessors parcel numbers 206-28013A, 013D, 013E and 013F From agriculture residential 36 acre minimum lot size zone to an agriculture residential 20 acre minimum lot size zone And an AR, excuse me, and an agriculture residential five acre minimum lot size zone To amend Exhibit A referred to, referred in Condition Number One and Condition Number Three regarding minimum easement with, in the La-Zy-Yu vicinity.
Is the applicant present?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present? Applicant is not present. We have no speakers on the item. Any questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make motion approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gordon and a second by Mr. Walker. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 6A.
Yep, five.
Oh, five. Jumped ahead of myself.
Thought I missed something.
Yeah, well, you didn't. I did. Item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number five is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to Board of Supervisors Resolution 2004-442 Which set forth a rezone of assessors parcel number 245-01077 From an agriculture residential one acre minimum lot size zone to a commercial recreation zone To remove Condition Number Five regarding the development in the Yucca vicinity. The staff recommends approval of this request.
Is the applicant present, item number five? Would you like to address the commission? Or just wait for questions? Okay. All right, we have no speakers on item number five. Any questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve per staff recommendations.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Selberg and a second by Commissioner Walker. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 6A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 6A is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to Board of Supervisors Resolution Numbers 2010-230 and 2012-21 To amend Condition Number Three of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 210-230 And of B O, Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2012-21 Regarding the timing of the NEPA and the WAPA approvals under amendments to the Mojave County General Plan For the properties within the Sterling area plan, the Sterling vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. The original rezone contained a two-year time period to obtain basically the NEPA approval As well as a Internet Connect approval for WAPA. The applicant requests this two-year time period be removed from the conditions in the resolution. Staff recommends approval.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. We have no speakers on the item. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ask a couple of questions from the applicant.
Applicant, would you please come forward? State your name.
I'm Bob Hibbs. I'm the manager of, owner of the property.
Good morning, Bob. This item or this parcel's been going on for quite some time. I know that two years ago, when you were before us, you stated that you were very close to sign an agreement with Siemens, I guess, from Germany On this project. And what has been done since two years ago?
Well, the reason the extension is necessary, Siemens is not part of the project anymore. But the reason that the amendment's necessary, we have worked with WAPA and gone through an RFP process To select a, an environmental firm to do the study to get the NEPA. The process was completed and then there was a proposal from that, that, the winner of that RFP. They have to do a environmental assessment of 210 miles of lines that form the grid. And then they are saying it's going to take about 27 months to get that completed. So we found ourselves in a situation where the, we were going to outrun our runway here with this.
Right. Bob, we are, some of us, we've been here for long enough. We've been, to some extent, familiar Because we had like three or four different applications before us. And it seems like the process is a little more involved than what you were stating. It seems like you need to have more players on the, you know, in the picture In terms of, you know, who's going to be the provider, who's going to be doing the, what kind of financing is going to be available. It seems like you're just extending this, the way I look at it, with no merit.
Well, we're very active in attempting to put together a coalition to get this accomplished. It is a rather large project.
No, I understand that. It's about 17,000 acres, but what has been done in the past two years? What can you show us on this project that it shows like a forward project?
Well, we have worked through the feasibility study with WAPA. That's been completed. We did the system impact study with WAPA, both for hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the next step in that process is to do the environmental impact statement. And we need to get that accomplished. So it is a very long involved process. And the larger the project, it seems the more involved it is.
So you're saying that WAPA would be able to provide you that without having any of the, you know, end users Or the one that they are going to be able to do the job like?
Correct. Correct. We're working on that other end also.
Okay. I'd make the effort with that. Staff, may I ask you a question? Are we familiar with the process and, I mean, what is the checks and balances on the project like this? It seems like, you know, as I said, if I remember right, with the other projects that we had, They had to have their ducks in row in order to be able to proceed with the project this size. And with the alternative energy, there were a whole bunch of documents that they were providing us. I'm talking about Cobra. I'm talking about others. And I don't see that on this particular project. And again, my question is, you know, why is the staff making a recommendation to approve when there is no forward progress?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Azami, we've actually processed these requests in different means and different matters. The department looks at the NEPA process and also the agreements with WAPA as being between the applicant and WAPA. The project can't go forward unless those items are completed. We've had projects where they've requested our approvals before they've gone through the NEPA process, such as this one. We've also had projects such as BP that have gone through the NEPA process and the WAPA process and then came to us. So we've had them, we've had the projects basically come forward in various means and matter, matters. For a while, the department and the commission did look for a power purchase agreement. We have not been doing that for a couple of years now. It turns out that, you know, I mean, some, they'd acquire them and then they, you know, they'd be falling out of some sort Or the utility would decide that they really don't need the, that, that power anyway. They have gone a different route to obtaining their renewable requirements. And so, you know, we did, they were not necessarily all that stable either.
Have you received any information or document from the applicant on terms of from WAPA or that this is going on? Or do we have any information? Bob, do you have any document providing us that, you know, you've been, you know, what is pending or you're going forward with the project?
Well, I can provide the system impact study that took approximately, I think it took about nine months. And then the system impact study that took a little over a year in order to get accomplished. And those are detailed down to the particular elements on what has to be accomplished on this environmental impact statement From here all the way up to Boulder Dam. And then other elements of what the WAPA loop, it's a, it's a circular loop throughout the state. And we are a large enough project that it, it isn't, it's not local. It impacts the entire system.
Correct. Do you have any communication back from WAPA?
I can provide those, those reports.
That'd be great. I appreciate that. As long as, you know, shows that it's ongoing progress. I make a recommendation to commission to table this at least for 30 days to get that document in because I don't, I didn't see it in our package. Thank you.
All right.
Is that a motion?
No, no.
No.
Is it still discussion?
Still in discussion. Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Mr. Hibbs, if memory serves me, the railroad had some concerns as well. Have those been?
They were addressed at the time that the Board of Supervisors passed that.
Okay.
Their question was.
I just don't want to get to the next step and then all of a sudden we've got the railroad coming in, back in and?
Yeah, that, well, that's my concern. I mean, this is a project that would significantly enhance the, the tax base for the county and, and the employment base. And I realize that it's taken quite a bit of time, but, but I just ask for indulgence. And, and I don't think leaving the zoning in place poses a negative for the county Or negatively harms anybody. If we can get it done, it would be beneficial for everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Bob, I disagree with you in terms of like the impact because, you know, the neighboring properties, they, if they have any other project, You know, they will be considered as, you know, the alternative energy that would impact them. I understand that the parcel is, I mean, the area that you're talking about is quite large. But it's still, you know, it would discourage others to do other kind of project, number one. Number two, I've yet to see any project in solar in our area go forward with. We had several different ones and except for like a few that were by unisource, which were a small scale. I've yet to see any large farms or large areas like this to proceed. We had like three of them that I know, or maybe four, and none of them materialized. So, you know, if it happens, yes, you are absolutely right. But with all the constraints involved in terms of the grid, in terms of the cost, in terms of finding the, the investor And also they're all banking on federal government to fund this kind of project and there's no such thing available. So?
To correct you, there is no federal funding on this project.
Well, I remember that, you know, everybody was trying to meet that September 2009 deadline to get, you know, their money, You know, to finance the project by the federal government. I am clear about, you know, some of the facts that is there. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, as long as, you know, we can be fair to the other property owners around this project, you know, that would be, that would be my case.
And I would say that the other property owners certainly had notice of this and had the ability. If they had an issue with it, I would think they'd come forward. So the notices were sent out appropriately by, by your staff.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
To go with Mr. Azami's comments, I think if we're going to table it and ask for documentation of some of this stuff, it'd be nice to see a schedule Or an anticipated schedule, what it's going to take to complete the steps that are required. And then we can evaluate whether eliminating the timeframe altogether is right versus a, you know, one, two, three, four year extension or whatever might be appropriate.
Sure.
Right. And if I can, if I may, it appears as if the, the environment, they give you a range for the environmental impact study. And that is upwards of 27 months. And these things don't often go according to what is scheduled. So it is a long, a long process.
Yeah, and I appreciate and understand that. It'd just be nice for us to see some projection as to what's anticipated here.
All right.
Is a two-year, excuse me, is a two-year extension enough time?
If we started the, the environmental impact statement today, it could be 27 months. So I'd say three years would be, should do it.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table this item for 30 days for the applicant to provide proof of ongoing progress on the project With the documents showing what was accomplished in the past two years that we provided the extension Plus providing the schedule as Commissioner Gordon requested.
Second. I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Azami and a second by Commissioner Jones. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. 6A carries. Item 6B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 6B is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2010-231 And Board of Supervisors Resolution 2012-22 To amend Condition Number Four of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2010-231 And of BOS, Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 212-022 Regarding the timing of the NEPA and WAPA approvals under the amendments to the Sterling Plan In the Sterling vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Based on the commission's action, this item is a part of 6A. And based on the commission's action of 6A, the staff would recommend that this item be continued for 30 days.
Is the applicant present? We have no speakers on the item. Any questions or comments of the speakers? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to extend or to table this for 30 days per staff's new recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Azami and a second by Commissioner Jones. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 6C.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 6C is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to Board of Supervisors Resolution Numbers 2010-233 And 2012-33 to amend Condition Number Nine of Board of Supervisors Number, Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2010-233 And Condition Number Three of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2012-23. Incorporating that condition regarding the timing of the NEPA. Resolution 2012-23, incorporating that condition regarding the timing of the NEPA and WAPA approvals required under the rezon of the properties within the Sterling area plan to establish a energy overlay zone in the Sterling area. This item is also a continuation of items six A and six B, taking into consideration the commission's actions on six A and six B. The staff would recommend that this item be continued for 30 days as well.
The applicant is present. We have no speakers on the item. Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion on item six C.
I'll make a motion per new staff recommendation.
I agree. I second that, I'm sorry.
We have a motion by Commissioner Azami and a second by Commissioner Jones. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number seven is an evaluation of a request for a zoning use permit on Assessor's Parcel Number 317-55-003 for an off-premise sign in a C2H general commercial highway frontage zone in the White Hills vicinity. The department recommends approval of this request with conditions.
Is the applicant present for item number seven?
Yes.
Oh, okay. The applicant is present for item number seven. We have no speakers on the item. Any questions or comments to the applicant? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve per staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Poznell and a second by Commissioner Selberg. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eight.
Good morning, members of the commission, Chairman Flusay. First and foremost, I'm Hal Barton with Development Services, and I'm pretty much a new planner here, and so for those I've not met, I look forward to meeting all of you. As we continue on item number eight, this is a discussion and possible action of the 2015 Mojave County General Plan Review, and we're also looking at selection and appointment of a four-member subcommittee to guide the effort and assist in conducting community workshops and acceptance of the project timeline. The 2015 General Plan will guide the county's growth through 2035 and shall be in compliance with Arizona revised state statutes. To start this off, we do have a PowerPoint presentation I'd like to give to the Planning Commission as we continue. As we start off, their zone of revised statutes are very clear as to the responsible parties required for the general plan adoption. Arizona State Statute 11-804 specifically states the commission shall formulate and the Board of Supervisors shall adopt or re-adopt a long-term comprehensive plan for the development of the area of the jurisdiction and the man prescribed by this article. Arizona State Statutes 11-805 specifically states the board shall adopt a comprehensive plan and subsequently amend or extend the adopted plan as provided in, by this article. On adoption or readoption, the plan or any part of the plan shall be the official guide for the development of the area jurisdiction. So in summary, the Mojave County General Plan is a statement of county policy to assist and guide the decision-making process. The Mojave County 2015 General Plan will comply with the Arizona State Statutes 804 B and C. These revised state statutes do require to identify the sources of aggregates in the general plan when the maps identifying such resources become available from state agencies. The general plan will include a comprehensive inventory of open space areas, recreational resources, and designations of access points. The inventory shall include an analysis of forecasted needs with policies for managing and protecting open space. The general plan will include policies and implementation strategies and planning for growth areas with mixed uses. The general plan will include an environmental planning element which contains strategies to address effects of air quality, water, and natural resources. The water resource is an existing element within the Mojave County General Plan that needs to be reviewed as we have additional information from the USGS, or United States Geological Survey, that has become available. And finally, the Mojave County General Plan will include a cost for development element which identifies policies and strategies to require developments to pave its fair shore towards the cost of additional facilities needed to generate it by the new development. And most important, the general plan is a public tool for the citizens of Mojave County to guide their growth through 2035. As we continue forward, to get the 2015 General Plan Review started, the Planning and Zoning Commission will need to. We need to appoint a General Plan Subcommittee at a regular scheduled meeting. The Subcommittee's task are going to be, consists of four commission members, of which will establish meetings and working rules. The Subcommittee will attend four public workshops. The Subcommittee will assist the citizens of Mojave County through the entire General Plan Review process. And the final slide I have here in this PowerPoint is the timeline that the Development Services staff has put together. The general plan will be pretty much a year-long process with final approval approximately a year from, to now. Staff's recommendation as we review the staff report is to accept the methodologies that we presented before the commission and to appoint a Subcommittee. Thank you.
We have one speaker on item number eight, Mark Schaefer.
My name is Mark Schaefer. I live in Meview. The Mojave County General Plan is a shared vision shared by all, including the community. It is hard for me to wrap my mind around the concept of a four-committee member appointed by the state without, appointed by staff, excuse me, and not have the community sit at the table too. In 2005, there was a flow chart which actually described the participation of the community as a, you know, as a citizens committee on that board which shared an equal, as an equal with that Subcommittee. We don't see that in the 2010 because that was eliminated. I'm here with the Dolan Springs Community Council and its members here today to ask that you consider adopting or creating a Subcommittee representing the five districts to be a part of that Subcommittee at truly citizens' participation, if that's what it's supposed to be about. I showed that flow chart at the Subcommittee on the county ordinance, but evidently it didn't get around. I shared that flow chart with the Board of Supervisors, and hopefully they are watching this now to hear, you know, what you think about it and say. Another part of this, public participation, is public involvement, and as you can see, there is no public. The county and staff have met the minimum requirements for filling out their obligation for public awareness. We asked that you submit to the Board of Supervisor a comprehensive outreach program. This is an important piece of document, as you say, to guide you to the 2035. How can that be possible if the public is not aware or involved? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I'm sure that, you know, you know that in the meetings that we had, we discussed this, and I think that that was well elaborated by Director Hunt, that citizens would participate and they would have their opportunity to place their input directly in those meetings and multiple meetings that is going to be reviewed. So for you to say that, you know, citizens are not going to participate, I believe that is not true. And I'm going to ask Director Hunt to explain how many meetings citizens would be able to participate. They can provide their information to basically the Board of Supervisors, which are the ultimate decision-makers on how it's going to be. It is not going to be decided by the commission here. It would be decided finally by the Board of Supervisors. Director Hunt, could you shed some light on that?
Can I ask, I understand that, I'm asking staff, did you happen to bring those flow charts from 2005 into 2010 that actually depicts the?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we have it, Mark. But before we get there, I, can I go back to the very beginning of that PowerPoint presentation? And then, then we're going to show those flow charts to.
By the way, Director Hunt, yes, those were distributed among the commissions that they participated, Mr. Selberg, myself, Jack, and Bob. So yes, we have received those and we've seen it.
Okay, for our viewers who are watching.
Okay.
So, can I speak?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you can.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Azami, thank you very much for the questions, and these are really, really important questions, and Mark is right, the very important aspect of this whole process is public participation, and it, it's required by statutes, and that's exactly what we want to do. I, I'd just like to bring the attention to the very first slide that Hal showed here today, and just make sure everybody clearly understands what the statute says. This statute kind of governs the formulation of the general, the very first sentence says the commission shall formulate the plan and the board will approve it. So we, in that spirit, we asked the commission, we had some discussions earlier, like Commissioner Azami pointed out, and we're asking the commission to take on that role, and basically, Mark is absolutely right, we, we need a citizen participation plan, a very detailed citizen participation plan, which will detail the opportunities for everybody to participate, and part of that plan, what we are asking, and of course it's up to the commission, but we are asking that we put that on the agenda regularly in the first few months of the year on the commission agenda. So public, we'll have a public hearing in addition to all the public meetings that we're going to have, and what we envisioned is that have committee meetings and also invite the public to those committee meetings, and had several people that, that showed interest to that, and then also have special public meetings and workshops in different areas of the counties, so make sure we collect everything, and every single comment should be considered and will be considered and will be answered. And then we're going to open up our website and make a special place for, where we place every single document, every single questions, answers, and process on the website, and collect all public information, and every minutes and everything, so everything will be public. And so I think that's what we have in the citizen participation plan that's coming up. Now, going back to those charts that Mark asked, and I, because he asked for it, I'd like to show it if, if, I don't know, I think we have it here, and I'm going to ask Michelle if you can find it.
Director Hunt, while Michelle's trying to find that, could you go over how many sessions or how many meetings are going to be that citizens would have the opportunity to bring and discuss and provide their comments?
Well, well, as, thank you for the question. As you, as we discussed earlier, the general plan by statute has to be done in one calendar year, which is going to be 2015. And actually, it doesn't have to be done in 2015, it, it needs to be done every 10 years, but we elected to, to do a review every five years, so it's going to be done. Now, we're going to start the process, we're starting today, so that's number one, and then we're going to bring it back to the commission at least one more time, and as many times the commission wants to discuss it, and then today what we had in mind was just, just a discussion, no vote, but hopefully the next meeting, commission may be ready to, you know, have more discussions and possibly vote, and then take it to the board, and then we're going to ask the Board of Supervisors whether they want to have a workshop also, so give another opportunity to the public to, to make comments on the citizen participation plan and, and, you know, make some input, how do we want to do it, and then after that, we like to take it to the board by the end of the year for approval, the citizen participation plan. So basically just lay down the roadmap for next year so we can hit the ground running in January, and so that will give us all the time in 2015 to actually do the work. The last time, when we did it five years ago, we didn't start this early, started the whole process in January, so it didn't give that much opportunity. So we're going to have a few public hearings, I assume this year, at least four of them, and then next year, when we start the, the process, that's going to be in the public participation plan that will be discussed here. What we, we are proposing that we, we have at least probably about four committee meetings, but it, it may take a lot more than that. We give you an example, and I appreciate your participation in the zoning ordinance revision that we're doing. We thought we were going to have like two or three meetings, and so far we had more than a dozen. So it takes whatever it takes to, to get through all the chapters and, and discuss all the issues, and then in addition to that, we, we want to have workshops at each community, you know, we want to have, of course, you know, at least in the big cities, and, and we can do more as requested, and then, then it's going to be brought back to the Planning and Zoning Commission again for a public hearing, but I, but I, like I anticipated, I had wanted to ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to, to consider putting it regularly on that agenda and then kind of review as the committee proceeds with certain chapters, say, discuss the groundwater issue, that's going to be a big chapter, and then bring it back to the commission one more time so the all commissioners can have an input on it and then before we move forward, so we make sure we're going in the right direction. And again, I like to get the supervisors involved and, and hopefully they, they will participate in a workshop, so, and I was going to ask the commissioners to kind of keep the supervisors involved, so we, so make sure we don't go out in the wrong direction that, that the commissioners or the supervisors would not support, and then as we proceed every commission hearing, you know, I probably another four, five of those, so now we up to 12 meetings, or, and then, you know, the, the public meetings that we're going to go out, and then, then we're going to go to the Board of Supervisors probably several times. So I anticipate for sure more than a dozen, maybe two dozen, public meetings or hearings on this thing before it gets to the approval by the end of next year. The end of next year is our, our deadline, pretty much by statutes. If we miss the deadline, then, then we can't do it, and we have to start all over again. So it would be important that we are ahead of time. I, I also wish to add that there is a requirement in the statutes that we get input from, from other agencies, and those agencies are, you know, important agencies, substantial agencies, all other counties in, surrounding counties, federal agencies, BLM and ADAT and so forth, and they all have, I think, and I don't want to make wrong comments here, but I think they have a 60-day period that they can comment on, that's what I remember. So we have to fit that in too. So that's the main reason we want to hit the ground running in, in January, so hopefully by, by the summer, we get to the, you know, completing all the public meetings, public hearings, we can start a 60-day review period, and then bring it back to the commission for more discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, can, staff, can you pull up that timeline chart again, since that's the first time we've ever seen it? It kind of would have been nice to have that before we even got here today.
Can you please go back to the timeline chart, and she has to jump between different presentations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for asking that question, and I don't know if you can read it. And. And Hal, you wanna go over that chart a little bit more, because Hal put it together, you know, it's more of the details.
Can I ask one more question, then? So, during that public participation plan meeting that we, I'm assuming it's gonna be a meeting, but developing the public plan, we'll be able to make sure that we cover implementation of how we're gonna incorporate the public into this, and, I mean, that's gonna be really an in-depth process there, because obviously, you know, the public is very concerned about how it happened last time, and how it's gonna happen this time, and their involvement in it, and...
Could we go back to those flow charts after this here, and we can actually show the level of participation by the public in both versions?
And thank you for Commissioner Bosnell, the question, and I hope we are demonstrating that here we are in September, last time, we didn't start this until January, here we are in September, and that's the purpose of this meeting, to get your input, to get all the information to you. So, hopefully, in about a month, you can think about it more, you can look at the draft, incorporate your comments, and then, we can make the public participation plan, actually, you make it, that's what the statute says, that's what I wanted to emphasize, you make it. We make recommendations, and the public makes recommendations, but you make it what it is. So, that's the purpose of it, and we wanna give you a draft format, and then, wanna discuss it more the next P&amp;Z meeting, maybe another meeting, and then have a joint workshop with the Board of Supervisors, and discuss it with the Board of Supervisors.
Can we get a copy?
Then, then we have a public participation plan, that's all we have at that time, and then we can start.
Can we get a copy of that PowerPoint presentation?
Absolutely, and I think it should be in the backup, if it wasn't, then we make sure we send you one.
I didn't get it.
Mr. Hunt, can you, I'm just looking down there at the staff recommendations, the methodology and the appointment of the subcommittee members, who's going to do that, and what's the criteria for someone wanting to be on the subcommittee or the committee?
Mr. Chairman, it's gonna be, it's gonna be your decision, and the commission's decision, all these...
So, how do the people?
The commission would select?
From what, I mean?
Four people from this commission.
Okay, I got that.
Participate at Arizona State law.
What about the rest of the people?
The rest of the people, they participate in those 12 sessions that, you know, Director Hunt said, where they provide their, you know, comments to it. And again, it is not only the 12 sessions, it is basically ongoing, so they can, anytime they can, you know, send information, or comments, or recommendations.
Are you asking about members of the subcommittee?
No, I'm asking, no, no, no. So, all we have to worry about is the four members from the commission?
And, yeah, because the four members, the number four came from, you don't wanna have a quorum, so we can have informal discussions. And then, in addition to that, you can add any members that you wish to, to that committee. I have requests from, you know, from the public, I have requests, I have a request from...
You want our answer today on who the four are gonna be, or you wanna wait till next month?
No, today, we really wanted to start discussion, and so, make sure we have plenty of time, and you get all the comments, you can consider everything. And if you don't mind, I'll give it back to Hal to go over to the timeline one more time, because that's very critical, that we understand, because of this deadline, and then, if, I appreciate Mark's patience, we can go back to those charts also to discuss it afterwards.
Okay.
Members of the commission, let's also, I wanna just point out real quick that item number nine on the agenda, we are bringing the public participation plan to the commission. This is the first introduction to the commission. We're actually gonna be bringing it back for adoption at the October Planning Commission meeting. The PowerPoint presentation was, I put together, just to start the ball rolling, this is really the kickoff meeting for the general plan to get this going. And in terms of the timeline, it is spread out where, and first and foremost, we'll be happy to give you a copy of this immediately, we will have, if you notice, the planning zoning subcommittee selection is on September through October, and we also are requesting item number nine, if the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors may wanna have a workshop, we can go on that a little bit. But, public participation plan would be approved in November, and so, we do have time for that. What I also wanna notice in the timeline, we have many subcommittees, we have one, two, three months, December, January, February, we're looking at subcommittee meetings and community workshops, where we're gonna go out to the community. In terms of getting the public involved, we're gonna go out to them with the subcommittee, we're gonna, and they're always gonna be there, we're gonna be taking their comments in, and listening to what the community has to say. At that point in time, we'll also be bringing, as Nick stated to you, each month, updates to the commission, the director are going, and just seeking input. If the commission has any questions, we're gladly gonna take it, and go forward with that. At that point in time, we'd be looking at incorporating, and then, the planning zoning comments, as well as all the meetings into the working document. And that process, here again, is gonna be in January, February, March, April, and at that point, we'll be here again, having the meetings at the Planning Commission level at any point in time, if there's new ideas, areas that the commission does wanna address, we'll be incorporating that into the document. This is a working document that is for the community. This is, you know, that's the whole purpose of the subcommittee, to work with the community, go out to the community, and get their involvement. At that point in time, we'll be taken then for the public hearing, for the review of the final document. But we also have to look into that in the timeframe, we do have what's called a 60-day public review period, that's in terms of that, we have to go out to the public, we have to send it out to all the surrounding agencies, counties, it's just where we seek everybody's input on that. And at that point, then, we do have to incorporate those comments into the general plan. And then, we'll, at that point, we're looking at probably a year from now is when the Planning Commission would be reviewing the final document.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And again, it's my understanding that this can be an ongoing participation for the duration from now until like, you know, the time of the, that item goes before the Board of Supervisors, that can be, citizens or whoever wants to participate can communicate to the subcommittee or to the committee with their recommendation for review, and maybe adaptation, or maybe, you know, whatever they decide, right?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
I guess we wanna go back to Mark's.
Mark, go ahead.
Will you please bring up the flow chart from 2005?
Yeah.
Why are we talking about 2005 or 10?
Because we are talking about public participation, the level of participation by the public in the subcommittee.
So, this is the, this is the, this is a chart, and I just wanna give a little background on it, I don't really know where it came from. First, I saw it in 2009, and I liked it, it's a good chart. It's a, it's a good visual presentation, what the general plan is. And, but, I'm not saying it's perfect, and I'm not saying everybody should like it, and it could be, you know, false with it, and so, this is not a comprehensive chart that should define our process, you know, our process is defined by Arizona statutes, and that's what we're doing. But it's a good visual chart, and, you know, I don't, we, I think they used it, it was before my involvement, used it in 2005, and then 2010. So, what I think Mark is pointing out, and that, and I got it from Kevin Davidson, I think, he came up with it, or got it from somewhere else, I assume. So, in 2005, there was, you know, the citizen's input is the most important, of course, and then, also, what I like about this chart, it shows that the general plan is not a regulation, it's just a guideline, a policy, and then, the regulations are down below, which, you know, kind of come out of it. But, the, under the citizen input, I mean, under the citizen input, there is a citizen committee, and in 2005, I understand there were citizen committees, and then, if we can go to the 2010 plan chart, this was used in 2010, and I think it's exactly the same chart, that's what I think, I'm not sure, except, we have a technical advisory committee, and Mark pointed out rightly, that, you know, the technical advisory committee was at that time, was appointed by the county manager, and those were people that were in the community, you know, they were asked to participate, and there were a large number of people, and many of them didn't choose to participate, but the meetings were open to the public, and we had, at that time, we had three supervisory districts, and we had one commissioner from each district on that committee too, and, but everybody was invited, and at that time, the chairman, I think, allowed everybody to speak. And so, what, if we use a chart like this, and it's up to the commission if you wanna use a chart or not, because like I said, it's just a presentation, then, I would recommend the third chart, if you can go there, where we put the Planning Zoning Commission in there, which is a statutory requirement. So, but, I am with Mark, and I think everybody should be able to participate every meeting, and then, we need to take the comment, all the committee meetings, all the commission meetings, and all the public meetings, and, you know, take their input seriously and answer everything. In addition to that, if the commission wants to appoint more members to the four committee members, you know, it's up to the commission. And so, the number four came from not to have a quorum for the commission, but public members can be appointed to it, and I have, you know, volunteers, people that asked whether they can be on that committee. My answer was to them that it's not my call, however, what I would like to do, which always did to invite, you know, them, they definitely can be there and talk, and, you know, discuss, participate, but whether to be on the committee or not, that's up to the commission to decide. And I, like I said, I have some people that already called, and I think Mark would be another one, that, you know, the commission could discuss. So, this is just to start out the discussion again. And so, and I didn't mean to put words in your mouth, I just put the charts up there, so if you wanna talk more about it.
Okay, interesting enough, the two flow charts that were displayed, I'm not aware of the third one, but I'd like to look at it later. We, public survey was done at several community meetings and events through the election year. On the 2005 chart, a survey was conducted next side-by-side with the 2010 chart, flow chart, and the public was simply asked, which of these flow charts and public participation would you support? Overwhelmingly, we had 30 that took one out there, 30 people took the survey out in the Golden Valley event, and 29 voted overwhelmingly to support flow chart A, which would be the 2005. When I asked, simply asked, why would you support that, they simply said, because you have, public had more participation in the creation on that subcommittee than flow chart B, which was done by Ron Walker, the county manager at that time.
You know, it'd be nice if these were indicated, the flow chart A, B, C, D, E, F, G, something, 'cause we have no idea. Well, something, some kind of indicator, 'cause flipping back and forth, it's like...
Oh, you need a side-by-side comparison?
No, I don't need side-by-side, I just, that's not what I'm saying.
Mark, you mentioned that there was a survey, what was the sample of the survey, how many people?
A good one was done at the Golden Valley debate for the district board supervisor, 30 people that took the survey, and 29 answered.
Okay, so basically, when you say public survey, it wasn't like county-wide, it was just a small sample of 30 people in Golden Valley?
Mm-hmm. Another one was done in...
Well, no, I was thinking that, you know, because we have 200,000 people in Mojave County, you're talking about, when you say the public survey was done, I was thinking that maybe it was something in a larger scale. Sorry, go ahead.
Perhaps, that's a good idea, why not open that public debate and see what the public says about that? I would certainly go along with that.
Okay.
I'd be lucky if we even get 20,000 out of that 200,000 to actually come back with a reply.
Be lucky if you got 1,000. Okay. Anything else on item number eight? We'll talk about that again a little bit more, and they're gonna send us the hard copy of everything. All right. Thank you, Mark.
Oh, I have 10 marked on there, can I just answer 10 now, and then I can, we can end that, 'cause I'm pretty sure I'm the only one who...
Yeah, you're the only one who signed up for eight or 10.
Okay. On item 10, discussion of...
We're not there yet.
Oh, you're not there, I'll wait.
Yeah, just hang on a minute, I got nine to go through yet. All right.
Do we need to make a motion on this, or?
I don't think so, I think we just, it's just discussion, so we're just, we'll just move on to item number nine. Yeah, that's all it is. Item number nine, this is just the part, we gotta, this we have to approve, or we're gonna approve it at the October meeting.
Yeah, Chair Flusse, members of the commission, number nine is the discussion of the public participation plan. And this is, this is where Mojave County goes out to the community, this is the one where we wanna get the word out to everybody to solicit, to get their comments, their feedback. This is, this is a document we put here, we here, and we brought it early to you, just for your review, and we have slated it for action on October 8th, and it should be the 2014 meeting. And since it is a 2015 review, that number's kind of embedded in my mind, but it is, should be stating the October 8th, 2014 meeting. And going over in Exhibit A of it, this is what we're proposing for the public participation plan. And we started out with specific goals of what we want to entertain for the community, and to take in consideration today's economic and planning challenges, and because there is a lot of changes that Mojave County's witnessed in the last five, six, seven, eight years. We, the public participation plan is a top priority, it is something that we do consider very, very important. And we also have to consider that with the changes of population and the trend changes, that it's necessary that we have to include all new statistical data that we're gonna be presenting to the public, to the Planning Commission. We also wanna have the Planning Commission understand that the general plan, land use maps are gonna be revised, include all the changes and amendments that have occurred over the last five years. And here again, Planning Department staff is gonna coordinate with all county departments to get all their input, as well as, most important is, we're gonna revise the general plan to include Arizona State statutes, which is 11804B and C. And summarizing real quick, the public participate plan, you know, starting with A, we just want early and continuous public participation, we do, are gonna include methods to which we're gonna go out and involve the community. We are, we do break down the notices and the workshops that will be held by the county, and we do also how we're gonna have the public workshops where we go out to the community, this is also covered into it, as well as that the fact the public hearings that comply with regulations and provide with the public the ample opportunity to address the commission and the board. And so, we want the opportunities there for the community to come at all times, as often as possible, to give their input to this. And finally, just, we're gonna have the method of reporting and addressing the citizens' comments, because we will be incorporating comments, and then presenting it to the commission. And here again, we, this is for the commission's review, and we will be bringing this back on October's meeting for approval. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Okay, item number eight, or 10.
Item number 10 is, staff, what we are, we're just requesting if the Planning Commission would so desire to have a workshop with the Board of Supervisors, it'd be a joint meeting, of which then, we can further discuss the general plan and the goals and directions that we're taking it.
That's gonna be a hard one to accomplish. All right. Any additional questions? Mark, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Yeah, just basically, will this joint workshop be open to the public to attend? And if not, it should be?
I would think most workshops are not, 'cause it's a workshop, but, I don't know, what did you have in mind, Director Hunt?
Chairman Flusse, I... Chairman Flusche, I may have to correct, we definitely wanna keep it open to the public.
Okay. I know, previous workshops we've had have not been...
And I think the county attorney would say that, you know, that when the board meets, it should be, by meeting light, should be open to the public, and...
Okay, we're cool with that.
Thank you. It definitely wanna have it open to the public and have their comments, and we just hope that the board agrees to that, and so I wanna ask you, you know, maybe approach your board members if they're willing to do a workshop, we would be very happy.
Why don't you send out a memo and run it by them first?
And I'd be glad to, I'd be glad to ask them to, you know...
We haven't had very good participation on that, while I think we should, but we don't.
Yeah, it's worthwhile to ask, and we had, we had a workshop before with the board together a year ago, and that time, they kind of, they didn't indicate they wouldn't wanna do it, so I'm hopeful.
Okay. Call of the public. Call of the public is over. Do we have any announcements or anything besides the general plan? Apparently not. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jones, and the second by Commissioner Buck, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, meeting is adjourned.